Aloha Chairman Aila and distinguished commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the National Park Service petition today. We are very grateful. I would now like to briefly introduce the people who will be speaking and give you a little information on what they will be talking about. Starting will be Dr. Paula Cotillo. She is a hydrologist with the Water Rights Branch in Colorado. She will be speaking about the efforts that the National Park Service has tried and exhausted as we tried to find solutions and alternatives to designation. Following, Dr. Cotillo, Dr. Jonathan Lekike Shoyer will speak, and he will talk about authorized planned use. Finally, I will speak and I will address some of the concerns that have been brought to my attention since we have filed, and I will also talk very briefly about some of the recommendations in the staff's submittal. So thank you so much, Dr. Cotillo.
Good morning Chairman Aila and Commissioners. Thank you very much for the opportunity to provide testimony today. My name is Paula Cotillo. I am a groundwater hydrologist for the National Park Service Water Resources Division, and I've been working with Kauloko Ho'ona Kaua National Historical Park on this issue since 2005. The National Park Service filed its petition in September 2013 after exhausting many of the options that are now being suggested as alternatives to designation. I would like to briefly summarize this background information to illustrate why we believe the Commission and Water Resource Management should act now to continue the designation process. So permit conditions. Since 2005, we've commented seven times on well construction and pump installation permit applications for wells in the vicinity of the park. We requested that the Commission condition permits so that increased pumping would be accompanied by increased groundwater monitoring. In 2009 and again in 2011, we raised concerns with the Commission regarding the quality of data being collected for the special permit conditions placed on the Kuauniki wells. Environmental impact statements and environmental assessments. Since 2006, we've commented on 14 environmental disclosure documents for projects which would increase groundwater withdrawals in the vicinity of the park in the Water Resources Protection Plan. In 2007, in comments to the Commission on the draft update to the protection plan, we requested that the plan contain clear provisions to ensure national park resources and water right protections to avoid resource impairment. Working groups and roundtables. In 2008, we convened a groundwater working group and held two facilitated meetings and two open meetings with a wide range of stakeholders. Since 2008, we've participated in every meeting of the Kona Water Roundtable. The Water Use and Development Plan. In 2011, we raised concerns with the Commission about the 2010 update to the Hawaii County Plan. We requested that the chairperson initiate designation proceedings based on information in the plan or condition the plan to require a calculation of authorized planned use. The plan was adopted without either action, and now uncertainty regarding authorized planned use is being cited as a reason to delay action on designation. And Commission briefings. In 2011 and 2012, we briefed the Commission's staff and the Commissioners three times on the limitations of groundwater monitoring and threats to the park's water resources from existing and proposed groundwater withdrawals. None of these options address our primary concern, which is regulating the location of wells. The spatial distribution of wells can substantially influence the timing and magnitude of any adverse effects. The model that you use to guide permitting in undesignated areas, the robust analytical model, assumes that pumping wells will capture fresh groundwater as it flows to the ocean. We are operating from the same starting point with recognition that cumulative effects of existing and future pumping wells will affect groundwater discharge in the park. Staff's submittal suggests that more time is needed for completion of ongoing hydrologic studies to better understand the interaction between the high level and the basal aquifers. We understand that there may also be site-specific geologic conditions such as perched aquifers or deep confined aquifers, which may make it less likely that a particular well will capture fresh water that would otherwise discharge in the park. In such cases, the Hawaii Supreme Court has found that the burden of proof rests with the applicant. The water use permit is an existing state process that requires every applicant to address whether site-specific geologic conditions at a proposed well will harm public trust resources. This permitting process however only exists in designated water management areas. The water use permitting process allows you to explicitly consider non-consumptive public trust uses of water and site-specific geologic conditions when permitting wells. Otherwise, you are simply maximizing consumptive use to the detriment of native plants and animals. We therefore urge you to continue the designation process today as a first step toward proactively protecting public trust resources during the well permitting process. That was my oral testimony, and I wanted to make just a few short statements about the staff's submittal based on what we heard today. The staff recommendation and submittal indicates that recharge, the USGS Water Budget Report indicates that recharge might be, is higher than 87 million gallons per day. And this same report also indicates that under drought conditions, recharge would be lower. It would, it would, it would lower recharge from 87 to 65 million gallons per day. This would lower the sustainable yield from 38 to 28 million gallons per day. So that same report that indicates recharge is higher also says under drought conditions, drought years, it could be much lower. And if you were to truly adopt the most conservative number, it would be 28 million gallons per day. With that said, the petition, with that said, sustainable yield is, what we, what we argue in the petition is not, is just a starting point. It's not, it should not be the basis for all the decisions in managing water in the aquifer system, but I just, I wanted to point out that there are lower numbers for recharge under drought conditions. I also wanted to point out that we're not just concerned about pumping in the high level aquifer, we're concerned about pumping wells in the basal aquifer around the park. There are wells pumping right next to the park from the basal aquifer, and wells have been proposed on all sides of the park in the basal aquifer. So that is also a concern. I also wanted to point out that invasive fish have only been observed in 11% of the park's ancolae pools. And one more thing, on native species, they are found in a wide range of salinities in the park, but the science that we've cited in the petition indicates that several species, including the orange-black Hawaiian damselfly and the candidate endangered water birds, require fresher water at different stages of their life cycle. And so we want healthy, robust populations of these species, and we want the conditions that allow them to reproduce. Okay, thank you.
Aloha Chair Aila and Commissioners, the newly elevated body before us. I'm going to talk to you today about authorized plan use, and in particular, the previous methods used by this Commission to calculate authorized plan use in previous designation considerations. And I'm going to summarize the written testimony that I've submitted. The staff's submittal that you have before you recommends that you put to an indefinite period of delay this process for further fact finding, and one of the reasons for doing that is so that you can spend time trying to figure out what the authorized planned use is for water in this aquifer. Along with my colleague, Dr. Bianca Isaki, and she and I have spent over a month looking at authorized plan use, how the Commission has applied it before and how it's been calculated. And I can just tell you, it is a rabbit hole with a lot of dead ends and a lot of very difficult issues, and we don't believe that you're going to accomplish much if you delay the process to calculate authorized plan use. I'll also note before describing what the Commission has done before, that authorized plan use and its calculation is really not critical to your determination of the National Park Service's petition. What we've raised is concerns with the way that sustainable yield is used as a management tool, and particularly, as Dr. Cotillo has talked about, the location of wells. Because under almost any sustainable yield, if wells are located in certain areas, they can have an effect on public trust resources. With that said, you know, what is APU? The definition of the first, or the first criterion was put on the screen earlier by Roy, and it refers to authorized plan use. There's two main parts to it. The planned use or existing use of water by a development that has received its state land use classification, so that's the first part, and its county development plan slash general community development plan approvals. That's what the definition says. What the definition does not say is almost as important. It doesn't give you any guidance as to how far in the future you're supposed to look. It doesn't even define what a development is, and it doesn't define for future developments how you calculate the potential water duties of those developments. Because of those reasons, any APU calculation, and I'll describe this more, can come up with a hugely varying number of what the future authorized plan uses for water in this area. So as I said, we went back and we looked at all the administrative record that we could get from the Water Commission from previous designation attempts. Unfortunately, the Water Commission has never used the same method twice. They've looked at community development plans and not looked at community development plans, they've looked at land use designation and not looked at land use designation. For the Winward Oahu designation, they looked at population growth scenarios. Not only have the methods been varied, but it's also not entirely clear that any of the previous methods used by this Commission, including the method used on Maui, which was touting up future water commitments and building permits, complies with the legal definition of authorized plan use in the code. Even with those caveats that those might not be the legal planned, the legal definite, meet the legal definitions of authorized plan use, what we did was, we took the previous methods from Lanaii, where designation did not occur, Eao, the final designation that was done, Winward Oahu, and Molukaii, and we applied those methods to try and say, okay, if you use those old methods, what is authorized plan use in this area? The calculations we came up with ranged from about 5.2 million gallons a day of authorized planned use to about 16.8 million gallons a day of authorized planned use, a very wide range, and that depends again on what water duty you use and how far into the future you look, so the range themselves could be much higher. But I will point out that all of those calculations using your previous methods are significantly higher than what the county has suggested to you. First, they suggested authorized plan use is 5.5 million gallons a day, then most recently 3.5 million gallons a day. In the alternate, you could try and do a strict application to the degree possible of what's in the law. And the starting point would be to look at, according to the county planning department's presentation to you on November 19th, that there's 16,600 acres of urban zoned land within the Kaua aquifer in the state land use urban district. All of that state land use urban land is within the urban growth boundary of the 2008 Kona Community Development Plan. So you know you're going to have to look at potential uses on all of that land. But here's where it starts to fall apart, and Roy Hardy of your staff actually started to talk about it. There are three planned transit-oriented developments in that plan and an unlimited number of traditional neighborhood development possibilities where density bonuses are allowed for compacting development. If you look at those numbers and you start to use various water demand numbers, various potential numbers of transit-oriented developments and traditional neighborhood developments, you can come up with authorized plan use numbers ranging from numbers lower than what the county has presented to many, many multiples of sustainable yield. Instead, what you could also look at is zoning. Now zoning is much more conservative than the definition of authorized plan use, because by definition, anything that is zoned has to be in agreement with the state land use classification, the county development plan. And that calculation was already done for you in the Water Use and Development Plan that you approved and the county approved, and it said just under zoning, full buildout of zoning, water demand for existing zoning was going to be 103% of the sustainable yield in this area. So what does all this mean? You know, water use projections are important and planning is important, and it's really core to the overall goal of the code. The code is not trying to step in the county's shoes and saying what you should and shouldn't do with land, but it's trying to enable the county determined goals, the home rule determinations of the county, to say, if you want to do this with your land, we need to assure that you have enough water available to do that development while protecting public trust uses of water. So you need to look at zoning and this disconnect that exists in this area between what the county's goals are for development and the amount of water that's available. But if you spend your time and indefinite period of time trying to calculate authorized plan use, you can come up with any range of numbers, and I can guarantee you that there's going to be people who think the number is too low and the people who thinks the number is going to be too high. Instead, you should make a finding, and to a degree, in your preliminary findings of fact, you did make a finding. You said on page 53, "By the time zoning and water commitments are made, there's no water planning to be done." So zoning commitments are already made in this aquifer to the tune of 103% of sustainable yield by the county's own data. You can plan for this future use of water and assure that the county's development plans and goals can be reached, but you only can do that under the issuance of water use permits where you have to look at whether the use is reasonable and beneficial. In other words, is it efficient and is it in compliance with existing zoning and planning requirements? So for these reasons, we believe that the staff recommendation to defer indefinitely this process to calculate authorized plan use is not going to be a productive use of time for the Commission, for the staff, or for really for any of the parties, but instead you should actually proceed to continue this process into the 90-day period. Thank you very much.
Does the NPS feel that if a delay is made in consideration of the petition, that there are areas where irreparable harm would occur?
Commissioner Starr, we have some general remarks in Superintendent Duchene's testimony, which is about to come, about our feelings and responses to the suggestion of delay.
Aloha Chairman Aila and distinguished Commissioners. My name is Tammy Duchene, and I am the Superintendent of Kauloko Ho'ona Kaua National Historical Park. Thank you for considering our request to designate the Kaua aquifer system as a water management area. We believe that the National Park Service's petition contains all the scientific, policy, and legal information that you need to continue this process today. I would like to briefly address some of the concerns that have been brought to my attention since we filed the petition and some comments on the staff's submittal. Our petition is not anti-development. Our petition does not seek to stop groundwater pumping. Our petition is pro-planning. Our petition asks you to manage the location of wells so that economic growth can continue with a robust margin of safety for water-dependent public trust resources in the park. A water management area is the only known tool to manage the location of wells. Some in the community were surprised when the National Park Service filed its petition in September 2013. In 1991, the Hualali Water Users Group discussed the possibility of designation in this area. In 2007, the National Park Service's Superintendent Jerry Bell began the formal process of outreach to its stakeholder and wrote a letter to the then Deputy Director of the Commission on Water Resource Management requesting assistance to form a working group. In 2008, the National Park Service contacted concerned stakeholders to form the Kona Groundwater Working Group to investigate opportunities to conserve and manage water resources in the vicinity of the park, quote, "as an alternative to state administrative control of groundwater withdrawals." While the National Park Service believes the Commission's staff preliminary findings of fact contain numerous errors and inaccuracies, which will be addressed in a response that will be filed, we do strongly agree with the staff's recommendation that it is inappropriate at this time to dismiss the petition. We also offer the following comments regarding staff recommendations to indefinitely delay the process. The Commission's staff proposes to continue the study period and alludes that allowing further time will allow an alternate path to be discovered. As Dr. Cotillo detailed in her testimony, we have spent the last seven years engaging all stakeholders known to the National Park Service. While many in the community have been opposed to designation, after seven years of discussion, no entity, organization, or individual has proposed a viable, legally enforceable, alternative management framework that would regulate the withdrawal of groundwater in order to protect public trust resources in the park. In conclusion, we believe the National Park Service's petition contains all the scientific, policy, and legal information you need, and we urge you to recommend continuing the process today. However, if the Commission feels compelled to accept the staff's recommendation to delay a decision on continuing the process, we urge you to only extend the investigation process under the following conditions. One, limit the study period resulting in a final Commission decision regarding the designation process no later than May 30, 2015. Two, in order to honor the precautionary principle and protect public trust resources within the park, the Commission should direct staff to defer approval of pump installation permits in the Kaua aquifer during the investigation and study period and until a decision on the designation process is reached. Three, require Commission staff to participate in any discussions with the National Park Service and county representatives about proposed actions that would establish a management framework that would regulate withdrawal of groundwater to protect the public trust resources in the park. Finally, four, require Commission staff to provide a written analysis of legal arguments contained in the National Park Service's petition. The National Park Service remains committed to protecting the park resources entrusted to our care. We believe designation is the only viable framework. We encourage the Commission to continue the designation process today. Thank you for your consideration of our petition, and we look forward to any questions you may have.
Thank you Tammy. Do you have any questions, Commissioner? Mike?
Yeah, thank you very much for your testimony. I'm not quite sure, maybe you can clarify, our Senator Shox offered, really sponsored a mediation process between the National Park and the county, and we understand one of the sticking points is that the National Park wasn't willing to have a 90-day delay requesting the Commission while that mediation process went on. Is that, is that true, or can you, can you tell us exactly kind of what happened and why that was not an alternative that you chose at all?
As Dr. Cotillo detailed and in my testimony, we feel that we have been trying to use cooperative conversations to find an alternative designation since the Superintendent wrote a letter seeking that in 2007. So over these seven years, we feel that we have really gotten no closer, not only to an appropriate method or tool to alternatively manage the placement of wells other than a water management area, but we still, and I'm sure you're reading in some of your testimony and if you've attended some of our public meetings, that we are not to the point where we believe that, where it feels like people believe that there is a viable problem where we need to look at protection of park resources. So the National Park Service's duty is to protect, to protect and preserve resources for future generations, and we feel that with the information that we know about the proposed threats to park resources, that we cannot mediate our responsibility and have delayed time incur harm to our resources.
Yeah, I kind of want to reiterate the question which I prematurely asked, which is, could you describe if and what the nature of irreparable harm would be if the process is not, not proceeded on or not proceeded on in a timely manner, which I believe you defined as before July of 2015?
We are asking, what we are humbly asking is for, for a decision to be made as to whether the process is worthy of continuing instead of an indefinite delay.
I can, I can try and answer the first part of your question. What Tammy was clarifying is, we said if you, if you do delay the process, we're asking you to put a time, time limit on it, and we suggested. Did you suggest May?
May 30.
May 30, yeah, okay. But the first part of your question was, will there be harm in delaying the process? What would occur immediately? And I think the case we've tried to make in the petition is that we are looking at protecting the resources as they are and preventing adverse impacts from the cumulative effects of existing and future wells. So we have wells, existing wells near the park. We are concerned about the pumping wells right next to the park at the shores of Kuauniki, and we're closely watching that monitoring data, and there are some, some concerns with what we're seeing, and I won't get into details about that unless, unless you want me to follow up on that. So the other concerns are proposed wells, future wells. Wells are being proposed in the basal aquifer and the high level aquifer around the park. And I think what it comes down to is burden of proof and risk. We are, if you maintain a status quo, you are risking the resources and the investment in infrastructure for future wells. So if you, if we just wait for an impact to occur, the situation that we're in is waiting for an impact to occur and then asking for restrictions on pumping. And if it's a golf course and an irrigation wells for a golf course, that's, that's one thing, but when you're talking about restricting people's drinking water, it's just a situation we're trying to avoid. We're not willing to risk our resources and also put other projects at risk by waiting. So we're asking you to designate as a way to help plan where wells go in the future so that economic development can, can continue and resource protection can continue. Does that answer your question?
Can you provide some additional?
I'll do the third attempt at answering your question, Commissioner Starr, and I hope I'll be helpful. What we said in our testimony, what Superintendent Duchene said in our testimony, to address the issue of will there be harm in delay? Now, I don't know whether, how you define irreparable harm or whether that's a particularly, particular legal standard, but will there be harm in delay? What we've suggested to you is that we believe you have all the information necessary to continue the process today, but if you choose not to continue the process, but instead keep us in this investigative period, defer the approval of any new wells, well, our pump installation permits, that would remove the possibility of harm from occurring during a further investigative process. Is that, clarify?
That added information, thank you.
Mahalo for your testimony. Question that was raised by our staff's submittal regarding traditional and customary practice and access, and I'm just wanting to get clarification from you folks, or what staff had presented today was that traditional and customary practice and access is limited in the park? Can you evaluate on that?
Sure. At Ima Ka'apah, currently there is nesting bird habitat for threatened endangered species. So while that habitat is there, we do have to
So while that habitat is there, we do have to legally restrict some of the activities. We are doing an EA, an environmental assessment of Imaqapah, and we are looking at different avenues and different options, and we will be evaluating the different management options for the use of Imaqapah in the future. But the rest of the park, yes, practice is allowed and encouraged.
And just to encourage, I think in reading the staff's submittal, there seems to be an inference that traditional and customary access somehow equates to unfettered access to all areas. And that is certainly, I don't think, the case for any traditional and customary practices. There were always areas that were prohibited from access for certain uses or certain periods, at least during certain times. And so in the case of this park, we have those threatened endangered birds there that have to limit access to that point. If I may also briefly go on record as part of a response to Commissioner Buck, what we have talked to the county about is one of the biggest issues that has come up is the people's fear that the existing, the process of permitting existing uses post-designation would extend indefinitely, very long process, as was the case in the Yau. We've been very clear that we are willing to enter into discussions and do everything we can to expedite the issues of those permits because our concern is with the cumulative impact of existing and proposed new wells. So it's not that we are unwilling to sit down and talk with people, but we need a framework to work in.
Sorry, a follow-up to my question on traditional and customary practice. So just so I'm clear, there is access for cultural practitioners unless there's some type of environmental threat to a bird or native life, but in other cases, in other instances, there is access for traditional and customary practice within the park.
There are some closed areas and restrictions, but yes, many cultural and traditional practices are encouraged. And, you know, a question that we get often is, how often, you know, can you show a graph, a table of how the park is being used? And the way we respond to that is, we try, we are respectful of people's practice, so when people are doing their practice, we do not go up to them and ask them and interrupt them and disturb them. So we do not have solid data on the number of practices that are occurring, but they are occurring.
Would you say from a policy standpoint, since you're the administrator, that the park is supportive of traditional and customary practice within its...
Very much so, within all of the frameworks that all National Park Service rules have to abide by, but yes, very much so.
Could you clarify how the high-level pumping is detrimental to the park?
I think Roy did a pretty good job of summarizing what the concern is there, that pumping wells in Malca of the park will capture fresh water that would otherwise discharge to the park. There's some uncertainty regarding how much, or what percentage of water that comes out of a high-level well would have otherwise discharged in the park, and there's some uncertainty about the timing of those effects. But I think what Roy was saying is, and what we agree with, is that there is a potential for pumping wells in high-level aquifer to capture water that would otherwise discharge in the park, and the implications of that is lowered water levels in the park and higher salinity.
But, you know, as mentioned, the stated safe yield is about one-fourth of the total And you still have concerns that that would have a detrimental effect on the park? And the other unknown is that there's really no hard evidence or hard scientific facts about how the high level relates to the basal, you know, underground floor. There's some theories that it just acts novel, there's some theories that it enters the ocean far offshore. There's no conclusive evidence that it does affect your ponds. In fact, from the scientists that we've been hearing the last several months, claims that the ponds are healthy, there's no detrimental effect to the pond. So I'm kind of concerned how you think high-level pumping will affect the park.
I guess I don't know how to say it any other way, that it will divert water and reduce groundwater discharge in the park. I respectfully disagree that there's no hard scientific data that indicates that there is communication between the high level and the basal. I think the staff's submittal summarizes the latest scientific results from isotopic and geochemistry studies that indicate there is some degree of communication. I think between 20 to 70 percent of water from the high-level aquifer is, was found in the park's waters. So, you know, the other issue that you brought up is sustainable yield and that there is, the sustainable yield is only a fraction of the recharge. And this brings us back to the concept of well location, where are the wells located? And in a submittal we gave to the commission in November, it indicates that wells are disproportionately located in the area of the park within the aquifer system. So if you did want to use sustainable yield as a criteria, you are close to 90 percent within the Fourahu Po'aa of the park. So it depends on the area that you're looking at and how wells are located, and it's really the conversation we're trying to start, is how do we consider the distribution and spacing and location of wells when they're being permitted relative to resources that we want to protect?
If that's your concern, you can, you could work with the Department of Water Supply or any other agency that has jurisdiction over that to come up with some sort of criteria. I know for a fact that wells are spaced so that they don't interfere with each other. When I was working with wells, our minimum spacing was 2,000 feet, and if during the well test, there's any indication that there's barriers or other interference with other wells, we'd be spaced far, far apart. So those concerns can be worked out without designation. Again, I fail to understand how it's detrimental to the park when, as far as we know, all the ponds are healthy and thriving and doing good. I don't understand how pumping the high level will have a detrimental effect on the ponds. They haven't had any detrimental effect the last 20 years. I can't understand why it should happen from now on.
Try and answer your, one of your questions first. It is possible that the park service could reach an agreement with the county Department of Water Supply on, if they believed they could say no to accepting wells in certain areas. However, and this is one of the issues where we're hampered today because the staff has not provided you an analysis of the legal arguments that we provided, but in short, in undesignated water management areas, individual landowners can apply for well construction and pump installation permits with no intention of having any agreement with the Department of Water Supply. So any agreement with the DWS would not necessarily cover all of the potential wells that we could believe would impact the park. The issues of wells in the high-level aquifer are complicated, and I think Roy did a good job at trying to tackle some of those, but I just want to highlight for you again, we're concerned with not just wells in the high-level part of the aquifer. We're current, concerned with the cumulative impact of existing and proposed new wells in the basal aquifer, and they continue to be proposed on all sides of the park. So even accepting any of the high-level wells from a level of concern, there still needs to be some administrative action to control the location of wells in the basal portion of the aquifer, and that location of well determination can only be done in a designated water management area.
So you want to just designate the basal aquifer?
Yes.
You know, I'm going to suggest that...
Could you work out, could there be something to be worked out with the commission staff to ensure that the basal wells adhere to the concerns of the national park?
I think that you're starting to ask questions that might pertain to the powers and duties of your commission under the code, and that this would be a robust conversation in executive session with your attorney general.
I would just like to add that we did approach the commission staff about designating just the basal aquifer, I think two or three years ago, we had a conversation about that, and they told us at the time it was not possible because that's not an official management unit.
And to answer your questions about the health of the ponds, our mandate is that we preserve and protect for future generations, so we do not want harm to happen. So our concern is not to, it is not okay for us to wait to see harm and then try to mitigate it or mediate it or to respond or try to clean it up. If there's harm to our park resources from when we inherited them or when it was designated as a park, we could be sued and we have failed in our duty. So we have to be vigilant about proactive management to prevent harm, not to wait for it and then have it, have, decide that it's a good time to pursue the ability to look at groundwater, the placement of wells.
I understand being proactive, but if you take proactive to dead extent, and if everyone was as proactive as you were, nothing would get done.
Well, fortunately, the entire aquifer is not a national park, so, I mean, we're a different standard, right, for this area, so...
Have you quantified the number of wells and the amount of potential pumping from both high-level wells above the park and basal wells in proximity to the park, and the rise in the quantity of these wells and potential pumping?
Yeah, there was a past effort to do that and then an ongoing effort to do this, and we've been working with the USGS since the mid-'90s to answer that question. So the first model that they developed looked at how wells incrementally, how each well or group of wells would reduce discharge through the park. And that's, that model was published in 1999, and I think we discussed it, I discussed it during my presentation at the site visit. So there were some assumptions there, that, one of them is that the high level and the basal aquifer were 100% connected. So we now know that they, that may be, that may not be true, and we have, the other limitation of that model is it did not look at how pumping and a reduction in discharge affected salinity. So we approached the USGS and actually all stakeholders in 2008 to develop a new model that would take into account any site-specific or new information, and also look at how pumping and a reduction in discharge affects salinity at the coast. And we presented, we asked all stakeholders if they wanted to invest in this model, we could cover the, whatever range that people were interested in. And at the time, there was just no interest in collaborating with us on that effort, so we have solely funded the USGS to develop this model in just the area of the park. And that's now what we're working with them on, and that's the model that Steve spoke about today. So we hope one of the products of that investigation is a better understanding of the area that contributes water to the park, and how much water flows and discharges in the park, and how any reductions in that discharge would affect salinity at the coast.
Yeah, I'd like you to define a little bit more about the model. I know the models that I am familiar with in, which have all been created in designated groundwater management areas such as Central Oahu or Yau and Wahe, allow the creation of a what-if scenario with the location of wells and how much they're pumped, and one can observe with the model, how, if one well is placed in a certain location, or 10 wells are placed in their locations, and they're pumped to different amounts, then what happened, what is projected to happen with the salinities, the transition zone, and even the shape of the lens and so on? Is that, is that what you're trying to do, so that what-if scenarios could be run on all potential, existing and potential wells at different pumping rates? And if so, without management, how would one get the data on how much wells are being pumped now or are projected to be pumped if they're in private hands? Because many of the wells seem to be by private developers and not by the county.
Yes, so you asked, is that what we're trying to do with these models, look at these what-if scenarios? And there's, what we're doing, and we're meeting with the USGS tomorrow to continue these discussions, there will be two, what we're thinking is two models, a cross-sectional model and then an aerial model, so that you could look in a cross-section at how pumping or an injection well will affect salinity and the basal lens, upconing, or, you know, what is the path of injected fluids? And then the other model would look at the spatial distribution of wells, what if recharge were decreased in the park by different amounts and in different locations? And so what we would like ultimately is to be able to use that information to evaluate water use permits for individual wells. And what we're arguing for is to have that framework in place, so when these results and these tools are available, we can evaluate on a case-by-case basis. And, you know, as we said, existing wells, there's very few existing wells that we are concerned about. We are most concerned about the cumulative effects of existing and proposed future wells.
And could you speak to what your knowledge base is as far as proposed private wells?
Well, in the petition, we tried to summarize what we knew from environmental EISs, EAs, and well construction permits. So one of the appendices lists all the proposed developments that we have commented on are considered, and that really is the red flag for us. That's why we filed the petition, because some of these proposed, there's a lot of proposed development around the park, we understand that that's going to happen, we're in the middle of an area that's designated for urban growth. What, where the wells are located is separate from where, is a separate issue from what will can be considered separately from where the development occurs. And right now, many of the developments are proposing to have their wells located onsite. So the example that has been brought up is the proposed Kaloka Makai development. This is proposed development for 5,000 homes and many other facilities across the street from the park, and they had three alternatives for, to supply all their potable water, and all of those alternatives involved wells onsite, so Malca of the park. There were different alternatives because they're not entirely sure about the hydrogeology of that site and what would happen if they drilled there. So there are alternatives, but they all include wells onsite, so it's a, it would involve a lot of water being withdrawn in addition to the water that's already being withdrawn, Malca and next to the park. And we want a cumulative, we want a analysis of the cumulative effects of these multiple developments, and we just have not been able to get that, or no one's taken, taken that on, taken the lead in looking at this, you know, what happens if you put a desalination plant right next to another desalination plant right next to the park?
Aloha, and thank you for your presentation. I had some questions about the additional information that you wanted to provide, have said you would provide and that you've requested be done, and you mentioned that you will be providing a response shortly. And you mentioned that you will be providing a response shortly. And I know everybody's overwhelmed with information and things are coming in and it's, it's challenging for everyone to keep track. But can you tell us a little bit about what shortly means in terms of what you plan to submit when? And kind of will that be, mentions it'll be a response to the findings of fact? Can you just tell us what's coming in and if you know, how far along you are in preparing that and when it's coming in and the nature of it?
Okay, so the findings of fact just came out last night. So we had, so we would like to take, do a thorough review and work with the commission staff to address any inaccuracies or errors or things that we think have been omitted that might be important. I don't have a, have a timeline for that. I think it would depend somewhat on the decision that you make today. But we would, you know, it would be a priority for me to go through that and to, to have some conversations with the commission staff and to work on that. If, if there were a deadline, I would do everything I could to meet it.
Okay, so do you have a sense of, is it like a week for you to submit it or?
So I hate to give you a number, but with the holidays, I would say not, not a week. But I think a reasonable, for me and my, and my workload, 30 to 60 days?
Just for those who have not seen the findings of fact, Commissioner, you know, there's, there's unpublished tables that we're not sure where there's cited from. There's a lack of citations in certain areas. It's, and this did come out at 9:00 PM last night. So we did, at 9:01, start to look at the findings of fact and try to get a handle on it. But it's, it's a little hard to estimate, even now having just looked at it some, on what it's going to take to understand what the basis was of certain statements made in the provisional findings of fact and also what information might have not been put into the provisional findings of fact that we believe is important.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you. And so that regards the findings of fact. And then Dr. Schauer, you had also mentioned a request for staff analysis, legal analysis regarding authorized plan use. And because I'm new on the commission, I'm still catching up with the piles of paper and links and everything online. And I don't know if there's been briefing yet on this issue, and so can you explore that a little bit? And then I do want to ask about the, sorry, just want to let you know where I'm headed, which is the, you said if you do continue it, you know, here are the conditions. So that's what I kind of want to, I just want to nail down these details so everybody knows process-wise.
Thank you, Commissioner Antolini. Specifically, you know, I talked about issues around the calculation of authorized plan use not being a reason to delay. But what you're also referring to is we'd like to see, there is a number of things in our petition which are really the legal background of why we believe designation is warranted and necessary. And it's very difficult to consider the scientific issues and the uncertainty absent the legal analysis. You know, we've put our, our legal arguments out there, but there's been no response from the staff to us or to any of the other concerned parties on what does the staff believe or think about the legal arguments that the National Park Service put forward. All the staff submittal says is these will be dealt with separately. And so our request as a condition, if you choose to delay, is take that on. Do the legal analysis and distribute it to the parties so that we can review it. Because we believe ultimately in your jobs as decision-makers, it's not just looking about the scientific information, but really the policy and the policy history and the law and how you use those two to come up with a final decision. Was that responsive to your question?
That was very helpful. And so you believe you, to not put it another way, that you've, you've kind of teed up the issues for a response. So you've said everything you've wanted to say so far on the legal issues and you're looking for some feedback on that. Is that?
I'm always hesitant to say that I've said everything that I want to say, Commissioner, or that the organization has. But certainly, a lot of work was put into the analysis and we've presented on our basis for filing the petition from a legal perspective. And we've received no written response to that from the commission to this point. And we believe that would actually be helpful for all of the parties.
Okay, so just to clarify that, if, and I'm not prejudging anything, if there is additional time for the submission on the factual issues, would you also request additional time to supplement on the legal issues?
We might.
And then can I go to the letter that you, your letter and the conditions, it's a December 10th letter? And the four conditions that you, and I just want to make sure that every, you know, that we understand them. So the first request was if there is an extension of the investigation process, you suggest only under these conditions. So the first one is to limit the study period resulting in the final commission decision regarding designation no later than May 30th, 2015. And can you explain why May 30th?
It wasn't a, there's nothing that's happening on June 1st or May 31st. It is just basically, we filed the petition September 13th, 2013. We sent a letter to people indicating that we were looking for a way to comment on well location in 2007. So we would just like to see progress on this issue. And, you know, when, in 2013, it was delayed for 15 months. So now we're, we read the staff recommendations which says delay and it's an indefinite delay. So we would just like to, if it is delayed for fact finding that it, that, you know, we know, it would be nice to know what studies or what more, what gap, you know, what information you would need to make a decision as to whether or not to continue the process and just so that it's not indefinite.
So the five months that you've suggested is more in your, just kind of a general sense of that's how much delay you're kind of willing to allow? But I just wondered to know if it's tied to any of this, that's why I was asking about the studies and the timing earlier. Is that tied to any particular milestone or study or?
Not particularly. It's, I mean, when we filed the petition, when we filed the petition in September 13th, we, we didn't, we felt that the isotope information would be good to have more information about strategic places for well placement. But we did not feel that, you know, deciding on a petition should hinge on the results in that study. So what we're essentially asking is an expedited, an expedited process to decide whether or not the petition should continue. Again, just because we have concerns about, you know, what, you know, what wells may be placed in the meantime while we're, while we're waiting for decision.
Okay, so that brings me to the second point that you suggested. It states, "In order to honor the precautionary principle, protect the public trust resources within the park, the commission should direct staff to defer approval of pump installation permits in the Kehe aquifer, Kehe aquifer during the investigation and study period and until a decision is made." Can you be more specific about what pump installation permits are pending that you're asking deferral of? Do you have a list or you'll be providing that or is that a general statement or is it? And maybe other folks know this, I knew I don't know this, but I didn't see the detail.
Probably, we'll probably give you a two-part answer to this.
I think the short answer is no, there's, there is not a pending permit that we're asking you to defer. We're anticipating that permits will be, applications for wells will be filed without an existing framework for looking at how those wells will affect public trust resources along the coast and in the park.
So you're saying if they're filed, you would want them deferred, but you're not referring to them specifically?
Thank you, that is correct.
Okay, that helps me. Can I keep, I'm going to keep going. On number three, require commission staff to participate in any discussions with the National Park Service and county representatives about proposed actions that would establish a management framework that would regulate the withdrawal of groundwater to protect the public trust resources within the park. Can you explain that?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Antolini. The staff submittal referencing the Senator Schott's letter says that there should be time for the National Park Service and the county to explore alternative paths of action. I think I'm quoting exactly what the staff submittal says, "Explore alternative paths of action." But it really only refers to in Senator Schott's letter, the county and the park service sitting down. We believe that any alternative paths of action to investigate some kind of possible regulatory scheme has to include the commission. The commission has duties to protect public trust resources no matter what. You're an absolutely essential party to the process. And so it would be requesting you to direct the staff to participate in any of those explorations of alternative paths of action.
And just to follow up, are there ongoing discussions? You're asking staff to participate, but I guess my question is what participate and what is anticipated? And this may be a continuing discussion today, but what specifically is anticipated in terms of ongoing discussions between the park service and the county?
So, sorry, this might get a little confusing for us and everyone else. The staff submittal says, "We want you to have time to explore alternative paths of action," and references the Schott's letter. That's the entirety of what we know is being asked of us. And we're saying, "We want you to continue the process, but if you don't continue the process and you seek us to explore alternative paths of action, however that is defined, the water commission staff should be an essential party to that exploration of alternative paths of action."
So you're not, there's no currently anticipated discussion?
We're referring solely to what was in the staff's submittal.
Okay, and then you already answered number four. So sorry to take so long, but that was very helpful, thank you.
And just one other thing, we have met with Department of Water Supply, we have met with the mayor's office, and we will and look forward to further discussions. It's just we, we don't want a decision on the petition and protection of public trust resources to hinge on the outcomes of such discussions simply because we, you know, we look forward to conversations. We also look forward to having conversations if a, you know, if a designation is, is declared to find ways to work with stakeholders so that the process is as easy as possible for people. So we look forward to having discussions no matter what. But it's just we, our request is that if there are discussions that become, the commission be, commission staff be involved. And that, you know, you know, we tried this in 2007 and that a decision not be hinging on a successful outcome of such discussions.
Just a real quick follow-up. So what I'm hearing is you, you would be willing, if the commission decided to delay the act, in, in good faith, to enter into a discussion with commission staff and the county for some alternative frameworks? This is not 2007, this is 2014. It's a change of climate, we've learned a lot, we have a lot more science, we've had the petition and all the discussion. So I guess I just want to make sure as part of the staff recommendation in year number three that you would be willing to sit back at the table in good faith to see if there are some alternative mediation type issues we could get, deal with.
We are always open to having discussions. Again, we would just want to ensure that the process was not halted, stopped entirely on behalf of that. But yes, under, under these conditions, yes.
Understanding one of the staff recommendations is, is assuming that maybe something positive might come, come out of that discussion rather than just the commission voting a-han, a-han formal to the designation. So again, it's tied in. So I'm reading in based on your letter and the staff recommendations, that's something that you would look forward to in gauging and if indeed the commission decided to delay at this time?
Commissioner Buck, and very respectfully, just to be really clear as I can on our position. Our primary position is that we feel that under the duties that you have as the water commission, you have sufficient basis today to recommend continuing the process rather than having additional fact finding. But we recognize that you may choose to accept your staff recommendation. And so our point is regarding if you do not go with our primary request, which is to continue, and instead you go forward and there is an exploration of alternative paths of action, we want you, you to direct your staff to participate in that.
And to please have a finite amount of time for the delay.
Thank you, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.